Good evening and welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals December 16, 2021 meeting. The time being 7:00 PM. We have the continued public hearing. Media Partners MRV LLC. It was a special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 213 Signs, Section 213-3C1A and Section 213-5A1 Table 1, submitted signs, and Section 213-6A1 Table 2, Dimensional Requirements Billboards, to allow the conversion of the two sides of an existing static billboard to an electronic billboard. Billboard is located on Washington Street, assesses map 004-009, and is located in signed District 1. Frank?
Attorney Frank Splain, representing Media Partners MRV LLC here this evening. I'm here to request a continuance once more. I'd like to just explain why. I know this is our third time asking for a continuance. I sent the Board a letter dated December 10th explaining what we're requesting, which is again, a special permit to convert a static billboard, two-sided, to an electronic billboard, two-sided. However, this billboard will be a little over 800 feet from the electric billboard that is beside, very close to McDonald's at the corner of North Street and Route 1. And under the bylaws, the electronic billboards have to be 1,000 feet apart. However, under the bylaw, you can also get a special permit to reduce any dimensional requirements within the bylaw. And this Board has given that special permit before where a height exceeded the 50 feet, went up to 60 feet, and you gave a special permit with regard to that. Under the state's CMR with 700 CMR 300, which I, three, excuse me, which I forwarded to you also, control and restrictions of billboard signs and other advertising devices, the state can give waivers for the 1,000-foot distance requirement. We've been trying to get some examples of them waiving 1,000 feet and other restrictions that are allowed within the state's CMR, so you can see that the state does this. However, the office outdoor advertising is all remote now. They go in periodically, once a week at most, different people during each week. And we've had a difficult time coordinating their times with our times. So my client has not been able to get in to get those examples for this board. So we're requesting just one more. We'll either be in front of you or withdrawing you in January, one way or the other. So we just ask for indulgence for one more continuance.
Yeah, so you're not going to be here?
I'm not going to be here, Frank.
Curtis, your schedule will be here?
Yeah.
And Kim and Lorraine?
I'll be here.
Okay. So I don't have any problem with it. You know, Frank called me this afternoon, explained the situation. Actually, he called me this morning, and I spoke with him early afternoon, explained the situation. And I think, you know, considering the nature of this particular matter, depending what a decision might be, it might be creating a precedent. I think it's appropriate for us to give him a little bit more time, his client a little bit more time to get the information and give us a full understanding of the situation.
The 1,000 feet is in there, and if the state has done it in the past, we really have to show that to you. Otherwise, the presumption is it hasn't been. So they've been trying to, you know, they know of one location where it's been done, but they want to go in and try to find what other ones. One of the hard things is, as I understand it, when you file with the Board, if you go in and ask for a waiver, you don't get a decision saying, yes, we give you your waiver. They just give you the permit, saying it's been approved. Whereas if you've been denied, they explain why it's being denied. Even if you're not asking for a waiver, they may deny it for one reason or another. So they haven't been really been able to get in there to get that information. So I've talked to my clients and said, you know, I'll ask for one more and tell the Board that if we can't come in in January, we'll just withdraw it.
Okay. Any questions? Diana, when's the January meeting?
January 20th.
Okay. Have our motion to continue till then?
I hope we continue until then.
Okay. January 20 or else?
Thank you.
So Frank, the next item we have is to talk about the highways, the billboards on the highway. Do you mind if I take Jeff first, though?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you mind if you will go first?
Sure. Thank you.
Good night. Good evening. Jeff Lovely. I'm an attorney here in town. I'm representing the trustee and homeowners at the Wyman Village subdivision over in East Foxborough. This is a 40B project that was approved back in 2017. Your Board issued a 40B comprehensive permit decision, and pursuant to that, we drafted and had reviewed by Town Council a trust that established a homeowners' association to administer the common areas of that subdivision. And also, we imposed covenants and restrictions on the subdivision. Since the owners and really the subdivision came out quite nicely, it's all sold, all developed, all completed in terms of construction. The homeowners contacted me a while back and said, we would like to consider doing a couple of different things that would affect the exterior appearance of some of the homes if they are permitted. The covenants really quite closely restrict any outside changes. And for example, the covenants dictate that all roofing has to be either asphalt or fiberglass shingles. Some of the owners may be interested in submitting an application for solar installation on their roof. Some of the owners may prefer to enclose their decks. There are patios that were permitted as part of the comprehensive permit. So any of these exterior changes were not expressly permitted and would apparently be prohibited under the existing covenants. So I had drafted an amendment to the covenants to create a process that may or may not lead to the approval of some of these projects if and when they are proposed by an owner or owners in Wyman Village. And essentially, it creates a protocol where their plans would be submitted to the trustee, or if it's the trustee whose plans, he has to get 10 of the 20 homeowners to support his plans. So the proponent has to submit detailed plans of either whether it's their solar, whether it's their intent to try to enclose an existing patio with a roof and screened walls, or another exterior change that was not expressly contemplated in the covenants. The trustee would either approve it or deny it. If the trustee approves it, the homeowner would then come before your Board effectively for a modification of the comprehensive permit. So that's a little bit of a procedure, but we wanted to make sure that any of these projects that would affect any exterior appearance issues came before this Board for approval. And your Chapter 40B approval, it would be presented to your Board. You would, and this is, we've actually done a couple of modifications, you would probably either, you could claim that it is a substantial modification and require a more formal hearing, or you could consider it an insubstantial modification and let it go forward. Essentially, I think the way it's been done is, this is insubstantial and we approve it. Or, you know, but there are certain criteria for substantial modifications. I don't know that any of these would be substantial. But the goal is to have some eyes on anything that would change any of the exterior layouts of those. Procedurally, I drafted the covenants, and also, another change that we are proposing is only the declarant of the trust had the ability to amend the trust, which really was more of an oversight. So we're also amending the trust so that the trustee, with the approval of 75% of the owners, could modify the trust. Anything that affects any of the common areas is a heavy lift indeed. You know, the way this project was permitted, it's intended that all of the roadways, all of the drainage, all of the infrastructure shall be and remain privately owned and administered by that trust. If we were to change that, we would require, in addition, I believe, to your Board's approval for fifths of the planning board and the selectmen to be on board. I don't foresee any of that happening, but I do think we need to create a mechanism where the trustee can do this without involving the declarant, who is Joe Lynch, and he's pretty much done with the construction part of that. So this was, I sent this to Chairman Overit, and he proposed that we should have this reviewed by Town Council, which we did. Town Council has approved it as to form, and it's up to your Board to consider it in terms of its substance.
I think Diana sent copies to everybody?
Yeah.
I have additional copies if anybody needs it.
Well, any questions? Again, essentially, it's a change of the trust agreement and change of the covenants. Creates a mechanism, an internal mechanism, within the homeowners' association for these circumstances. And ultimately, if that is approved, it comes to us. So it's not a change itself of the comprehensive permit, but a change of the documents that govern the homeowners' association. And if somebody, for example, wants to put a solar array, you know, the panels on the roof, will not be able to do so unless they get the internal approval and then the approval from us.
And any other necessary permits or approvals, you know, building permits and things like that?
Yeah, I wasn't involved with this when it was approved, so I really don't know much about that. Would all, if these changes would be imposed on all of the occupants up there, tenants or however you refer to them, would I have to kind of agree to?
Well, this would, it would be a proponent, probably a single homeowner or perhaps several of them. I think there's been some discussion in particular about possibly roofing and screening some of the patios, and some people may be interested in solar. They may come in together, or they may come in individually. There is no thought of, that I'm aware of, of putting solar on every roof. It would only work on one side of the street.
No, I'm not really trying to think about an individual case. I'm just thinking, if I understand this right, you're kind of changing, they are changing the rules that they impose on themselves, right?
Which were in turn imposed really by the permit.
Yeah, the comprehensive permit prohibits.
Okay. So they have, there's no, everybody's on board because they have to be on board if you change these things.
I think we should, this isn't overriding anything that's already internal and existing.
No. No, this is broadening the ability to make certain changes subject to a particular, you know, for example, I mean, sometimes when we draft those covenants, you don't really foresee everything that may come up.
Right.
So, you know, the solar has to meet the neighborhood's standards aesthetically, you know, however they do the decks and yours' standards, and the decks and screened porches would as well. But it's either, it was either slightly gray in the permit and the covenants, or it was arguably prohibited.
Yeah, so the comprehensive permit prohibits exterior changes without our approval.
Right.
And what Jeff is putting into place is an internal mechanism before it gets to us, if, as, you know, an example, a homeowner wants to make, you know, one of these types of exterior alterations.
Yeah, I think I understand. So let's just say, because you know, I am a homeowner up there, and I decided, and these things are not in play, which you propose, and I decide I think I'd like to put solar on my roof. So the steps are going to be, first, I have to get the blessing of the internal organization, not even talking to the town yet.
Right. First to the trustee.
And that is what's kind of laid out in this.
Yes.
And after he gets that approval, he comes to us to make a determination.
And we may decide to call a hearing, or we may not.
We determine it's a substantial change, then we have a hearing.
And then the abutters would have opportunity to comment.
Right.
And I don't know if this went through with opposition before or no opposition. I'm just saying that.
The 40B itself?
Yeah. I mean, we had to do something up on Fisher Street.
Yeah, this, you weren't on the board.
And we had a lot of resistance to that.
Him and I were on the board. There was a little bit of opposition from some of you.
Yeah, and we ended up being taken to court and all this, and that's all fine and wonderful. But, you know, when they came about identifying this dog enclosure, we, at least I felt, in light of that, we should make this a hearing, give the whole world an opportunity to come up and tell us what they thought, and I don't think anybody came. But if it came up later, we could say, look, we...
And I think that is, that's the intent of the process that we have here, that your Board gets a look at anything that any of these owners would propose. The substance of this was discussed and approved at their annual meeting, but that was conceptual. They didn't have this document in front of them, but they were aware that we were trying to create a pathway for those who would be interested in roof-mounted solar or the deck work or other exterior changes to bring them to the trustee and then before this Board.
The Association now have to approve these documents because it wasn't ready at their last meeting on...
No, I don't think that's necessary. This is, the documents that I have tonight, and if we succeed, I'd ask that you sign them. I have an amendment of the trust, which is signed by the trustee only, and I have the second amendment of the covenants signed by Joe Lynch because he had to in order to approve the changes that are in there. And then that would require your, which you can approve or deny it, but this covenant would require ZBA approval.
I mean, I'm not against this. I just feel, I don't want to get into the business of managing these properties. I mean...
Well, we're really not.
I can't say I'm done with this because I never was in it to begin with, but, you know, there's others around town I'm done with as far as I'm concerned, you know.
Well, this would probably reduce the amount of time people come here and not increase.
I would think if you, if one came before you and then another very similar project came before you, it would probably self-streamline over time.
Yeah. Oh, it would become, you did this before, why aren't you doing now?
Any other questions?
So your, so what I understand is that, in theory, the residents are for this. They haven't seen the specifics, but in theory, they understand what's coming and they're approving of taking these sorts of steps. And Town Council has approved it.
Yes.
And the trustee has approved this as well. Okay. So all those different parties are for this. And what you're, you're not talking about any increase to the square footage of the residences, right? You're just talking about exterior changes like something on their roof, or putting a roof over their deck or their patio, screened in, that sort of thing. So no internal square footage increases. That's not what we're talking about.
Right. Nobody can, other than by putting a wall of screens and a roof over a deck, they can't increase the footprint or square footage of their house under these documents. And if anybody proposed that, my thought would be, your Board would either consider that to be like a straight violation of the 40B or a substantial change and have a full hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
This is why you're saying it now. It's not going, you wouldn't increase, at least what I think of, as habitable area. If it's a screened-in porch now, you're not...
Right. No living area.
You know.
And again, the language in the documents itself would be fairly explicit as to what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, if somebody wanted to increase the square footage of the home, they would have to come before us to make a determination if that was substantial.
They might have something to say about that.
And again, there are three, a recollection, there are three separate provisions within this comprehensive permit that prohibit exterior alterations without our, but for our consent. So, motion to approve?
Yeah.
You have documents you want us to sign, Jeff?
I do.
I move in. That's a fine document. All in favor?
Thank you.
There's no copy or?
Yeah, I have multiple other copies, but the original has been signed by not your branch. And what I'm proposing to do is take this, report it, announce it to Diana.
Do you have to file with Bob first or Bob Cutler?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So everybody needs to sign this, right?
Yeah.
We amended the document in the past, but I do...
Okay.
Thank you.
So Jeff, as long as you're still here and Frank is still here, I'm pleased to let everyone know we will have a new building commissioner. I was part of a group of seven who interviewed four candidates about a week ago, a little bit more than a week ago. All of them had good qualifications. Three of the four were currently, or are currently, building commissioners. The fourth, who is not, at one time in the past, was a building commissioner. So they all had that kind of background. They all had their, the appropriate certification. Two of them were very strong candidates, and this morning, Bill Keegan and Mike Johns met with the preferred candidate, made him an offer. He has accepted and will start on January 24th. His name is Scott Shippey. He's currently the building commissioner and has been since 2010 in the town of Marion. And at least those of us who met with him were very, you know, very pleased. Diana, I don't know if you had a chance to meet him today at all or...
No, I heard him in the other room, but he didn't come into ours yet, so.
So we're, you know, happy to, we'll be happy to welcome him in another five weeks. Again, he's got a good background.
Is there still an assistant?
Really good presentation.
As well?
We look forward to working with him.
Is there still an assistant as well in place, or was there an assistant building commissioner or part-time or something?
Inspector.
Inspector?
Thompson, Thompson Building Inspector.
Well, the full-time inspector and a part-time?
A part-time inspector.
That's what I meant, yeah. Okay.
So again, January 24th, he'll be here.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Hopefully he'll last one of six months.
Hopefully he'll last one of six months, yeah.
I just have one question. Does he live up on the North Shore?
South Shore now. Marion, you know where Marion is?
That's where he works.
In West Wareham.
Oh, that's where he works.
Yeah, in West Wareham.
But he doesn't have to deal with the bridges, does he?
Right, right. When I came home after interviewing, we had about almost four and a half hours worth of interviews that day. And when I came home and was talking to my wife about it, she said, well, I hope Bill Keegan asked him about the commute, just to make sure he doesn't have any problems with it. But again, he'll be here on the 24th, and we're looking forward to it.
That's great.
Go ahead.
Attorney Frank Splain here again. I'm here representing Arthur Rounds and his family. Joining me is Attorney Robert Burr Jr. of Canton, and he's representing American Outdoor The Rounds own some property on East Belcher Road. Some people know it as Dump Road. And it's been proposed by the American Outdoor Advertising Company to possibly put an advertising board there, a billboard, electronic. As this Board knows, billboards are only allowed within District 1, which is along Route 1. I'm sure as the Board also knows, along 95 and other interstate highways, billboards are coming up. So I talked with some members of the administration here with regard to that, with regard to possibly just bringing forward a citizen's petition. But my preference really is to work with this Board to write up any changes that would allow billboards along 95 so that the language that goes into the town meeting is acceptable to the town and to the Rounds and American Outdoor Advertising. It does not mean that any Board or committee, you know, is endorsing that until they've looked at it, considered the advantages and disadvantages of allowing it along 95. But if we put together a citizen's petition, once that's given, all we need is 10 registered voters in order to get it on the annual town meeting. Once that's handed over to the selectmen, the wording in that cannot be changed for the warrant. So then, after working through it with the town, if the town, you know, officials were in favor of it but wanted to change it, we'd have to amend it at town meeting. So our preference is to work with the Board to get the language that would be acceptable to you because the Board of Appeals has been designated as the Board to come to with regard to the signed bylaw. There was a former sign committee, billboard committee, but that was disbanded with this Board being designated as, you know, the Board to come to with any requested changes over the signed bylaw. Just to give you a little education about where we're talking about, I think I gave all the members the zoning map, the latest, last adopted 2006, I forgot to bring it stand. Put it here. So it's on, I tried to put a little red dot on it, I don't know if it came out, but Springbrook Road is right here, limited industrial zone. So it doesn't direct at 95, but again, under the District 1, the roads on Route 1, you have to have frontage on Route 1. My feeling is that you can't really use that language because nobody really has frontage on 95. You border 95, but frontage kind of indicates that you have access to a roadway, and this way, nobody has access to a roadway. But we feel that, and again, American Outdoor Advertising feels that that location would be very good for both the north and southbound direction for two sides. I've also, as I indicated, spoken with the administration, Town Manager, Bill Keegan. And before I brought this to him, they had been looking into possibly putting a electronic billboard on the DPW garage site. Been approached by that, been in some discussions, I think it's a very preliminary stage, but looking at requirements, and also the money that could be generated for it, it's still in the process, but he indicated to me that, you know, they would like to use those funds for capital projects, some of the bigger projects that are coming down the road. One of them actually is a creative facility at the DPW site. And I spoke to him and asked him if he felt comfortable for me to bring it up and tell this board that, and indicated yes to me. So, with taking that into consideration, I thought it was advisable to come upon this board, to ask, you know, with the assistance of putting this together, so that it's, you know, advantageous for the town, if they want to go forward, possibly put a billboard there, so it works for Mr. Rounds' location. And I'll tell you, the closest resident to that location is well over 1,200 feet. That's the closest resident. You know, from the existing building, which billboard would be further away, to the closest residence on Cathy Drive, which is right over here, well over 1,200 feet. And actually, from the closest point on this property line, which is further down here, to the closest point on our quality zoning district, is also over 1,200 feet. So, any residents with regard to what we're proposing, it's quite a distance, but all that will be hopefully vetted out through the process on that. Also, you'll notice on it that the majority of 95 and 495 is residential. And under the state guidelines and federal, I believe, is that correct, Tom? That you can't have billboards in those zones. So we probably, we would be limited really to limited industrial zones, but 195 and 495. But again, you know, that, that's how I would approach it. I think working with this board is in both our interest and hopefully the town's interest. And again, once we've put it together, we can bring it forward to the different boards and committees within the town to get their input at that time, including this board, see if they have any recommended changes, and whether they, you know, support it or not. Because there's advantages, not entirely for the town, and for their own billboard, but also with other billboards, because you have to go to mitigation agreement. You know, the other towns around here, Sharon, can't, as well as having their own billboard. So, we'd like to just request to work with this board in some fashion, so that we can get something on the annual town meeting for this may. And we're working towards that goal. But you go through that type of process, sometimes you realize you might not make it, but we'd like to have that as the goal, even if the selectmen just agree to keep a placeholder, because a citizen's petition has to be filed by, I think, February 1st, and we'd like to get on the town meeting with just two inches of difference.
So just a little bit of history. Mr. Burr did contact me, I believe it was in September or late August?
Late August, early September, yep, good memory.
About this, and I think I mentioned it to the board, that we might have a discussion at, at some point, you know, concerning this. And then Frank called me probably a month and a half ago, the same subject. Bill Keegan has also mentioned it to me, so he hasn't gone into any detail with me, but I know that he's interested in the potential of a billboard of the DPW, you know, property. Lorraine and I were on the billboard advisory committee. I don't think we ever, the issue of something on the interstate ever came up.
No, no. Just a quick question, Frank. The spot that this is marked on, is that?
Springbrook Road.
Right, so it's indicating that it's on this side of, of East Belcher, it's not on the side of 95?
No, it's not. You know, no. But because it's set off enough, you know, on a location, they've determined it's, it's a good spot. You know, sometimes if you're too close to the highway, it's, it's not good. And if you've ever gone by on, and looked on Route One and Sharon, they're off of the highway, at least the two that I've seen, when I've turned them by, because I've looked at them, you know, a distance. But that's something that we can go through when we're doing revisions to the signed bylaw, as to what the requirements will be. Because again, nobody will have frontage, as that word is understood, along 95. They will, you know, abut 95 to some extent, and in this case, we won't abut 95 at all, but because of the distance and the location of it, they determine it's a very good location for us.
So Barney, would it involve changing, like, the tables that allow?
Um...
There are, there are a number of different ways you could do it.
We, we could set up a new sign district. We could do an overlay district. And again, we have three sign districts. We have sign District One, which is essentially Route One. Sign District Three is the downtown area. And the rest of the town is sign District Two. So we can set up a new sign district, which would be properties within a certain feet of the, the interstates, or an overlay district, or carve out exceptions within sign District Two, that would allow billboards on certain properties that are within a certain number of feet from, you know, from the interstates. I, I think, and I've thought about it, but I haven't really delved into it. I think the, if we were to go in that direction, it would be, what would be the simplest, what would cause the least number of changes to the bylaw, would be what I would opt for, if we were to go in that direction.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like maybe having a separate, since it's a separate concept that we never considered, maybe having a separate approach for that.
Mm-hmm.
Separate zone.
Yeah, the one problem I have with a separate zone, if we had a, had a new zone, then we have to deal with other signs within that, that zone, which might complicate matters. Which is why an overlay or exceptions within sign District Two would, I think, make more sense. But as Frank indicated, it's, I don't want to say it's a lot of work, but there's a lot of things to think about.
Yeah, you know, Attorney Burr and I have gone back and forth on it, and both of our initial gut reactions is work within the district, sign District Two that it's in, and try to work it that way. Sometimes when you start writing it, you realize, this isn't going to work.
Yeah.
You know, so then, we may have to go to a separate district, or an overlay district, or something like that. But we both came to the same conclusion, talked about the different ways of doing it, but we both thought, starting there, we thought would be the easiest to get to where we wanted to go, because of the reason, you know, Barney, because even if you do an overlay district, and how are you going to define it? And I think you could do that within District One on itself. But again, you know, having written some zoning changes for clients and for the town, once you start writing one way, sometimes, after a few hours, you realize, you know, this isn't, you know, you're running into too many questions, that you see. And then, those are just the questions you're coming up with, and how many are you missing? So then, we may have to go in another direction, but that was our initial reaction. But, you know, our big thing is go on and work with the board, and if the board thinks going with a separate district is the way to do it, we'll do it that way, the overlay, you know, whatever the board is most comfortable with. And again, we're not asking you to endorse it at this time, just work with us, so that it's something that you can be comfortable with, if it passed, and then look at it, you know, after considering all the benefits to the town, you know, comments from the residents, and, you know, any detriments that may, you know, may brought up.
One of the, you know, thoughts I have is that, you know, again, we're responsible for, for sign issues now, we're not on the billboard advisory committee, but for something like this, I'd rather not go to town meeting, assuming that we're, you know, in favor of the idea, as a zoning board article, I'd rather sit down with the Board of Selectmen and get their approval and authorization, so that, you know, come town meeting, even if it is, if it is our article, we've got the Board of Selectmen, a support on it.
It can always be, even though it's not officially a citizen's petition by sign, they can, you know, designate it that. You know, because if, you know, if we're running out of time, and the Board of Selectmen, for example, says, you know, "If you guys aren't going to make it by February 1st, you know, we're not going to put it on, but we think we're close enough," we may do a citizen's petition, because again, it only takes 10. But what I encourage people, when people come and talk to me about citizen's petition, I say, "First, go and talk with the town, you know, see if you can work with them on, on the wording." And even if you just get their word, that they will put it on the warrant, you know, after the February 1st date. Because again, I've seen it where, you know, a citizen's petition comes in, and, and then literally I've gotten the motion, and I'm like, "No, you can't change the wording. The wording has to be exactly what's in the citizen's petition, you can't change what's going in the article." And all of you know, sometimes when you go through the process, improvements can be made, you know, when people bring up questions.
So, I've got a question for Mr. Burr.
Yes.
This is, you know, based on the conversation that he and I had, you know, several months ago. So, as you had indicated to me, you, you either are now, or were, a selectman in Canton?
Yes, I was a selectman for 13 years in Canton, and contacted you, Mr. Overe, plus also Mr. Keegan as well, too, whom I've known for probably 20 years, back in the time that he was in.
So, going north on 95?
Yes.
There is a digital billboard that's in, in Canton, and you were on the Board of Selectmen, I gather, when that was approved.
Right, yep.
Did you have to get federal approvals for that, being that it's on the interstate, or bordering the interstate?
Well, it was interesting, the, each, when that board, the one that you're talking about, that abuts Shawmet Road, which was the first one in Canton of, there's now one at I-95 and I-93 that I was also involved in as well, too. At the time, the town of Canton really wasn't interested in billboards, that's going back to about 2004, and it's amazing how fast time goes by and the number of billboards that are out there now. But Amtrak wanted to put a, a signed billboard, and they could circumvent all the local zoning bylaws at the time. So, we got out in front of it, realizing that it was almost a fait accompli, and came up with our own proposal and mitigation plan. As I recall, it's going back about 16 years, I know that we had to comply with federal regulations, but not necessarily go before any type of review board at the federal level. I think the Office of Outdoor Advertising has promulgated their rules in such a way that they're consistent with federal law. We were involved with the federal government, with the whole university station, and I think it was occurring at that same period of time with the billboards as well, too. So I'm trying to remember exactly when we got involved with the federal government, but for the most part, the Office of Outdoor Advertising, their rules here, take into consideration that. I must say that I've represented American Outdoor Advertising in a number of billboards, and through the state here in eastern Massachusetts. And the billboard bylaw that you have here in Foxborough, as I've stated to you, is the best that I've seen. In many towns, the sign zoning bylaws are, still look at signs as we traditionally knew them, which are signs on businesses, or signs advertising, small, they're not the electronic billboards. And so, you have to get a lot of variance relief, which is difficult to do with a sign, even zoning bylaw, that you consider to be set up for a particular purpose, and you're asking for extravagant relief. So I thought that the bylaw that the town and the committee came up with is well designed, it's a great infrastructure there, so whether it's through an overlay, through a fourth district, or through a modification to District Two, or even to District One, I think that in Foxborough, the, the template is there to make modifications to it within your existing bylaw. So it was clear a lot of time was put into that. So it's easier to look at that and say, "Okay, where can this apply in another portion of town?" Than it would be a traditional, say, zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, thoughts?
Oh, it's really, I'm knee-jerk when I look at this, and say, "Well, you probably possibly could think about these industrial zones, which is what you're really talking about."
Mm-hmm.
And, and just limit it to that, and then build some regulations, there may be some setbacks from the highways, and...
I'm sure you have to comply with what the federal standards are, setbacks.
Say that again?
I'm sure there'd be some sort of federal guidelines as to how far the setbacks would be from the interstate.
Yeah. I didn't realize till, till just now, because I've been, this has been in my head for a month or two, since it got brought up, and I came down 95 South the other day, and you see all those billboards, and that's the Sharon stretch.
Yeah.
And you go, "Wow, look at that, bang, bang, bang." Then think of them being on Route One. I think that's what she really indicated.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, "Oh my God, look at all those, and is this where we're headed in Foxborough?"
But, but going north, it's just the ones?
Just the one, I got to think about where that one is, but, but I can, you know, firsthand look at the stuff southbound, it's like, but it's not on 95.
Earlier this week, my wife and I went up to Sutton to visit my sister and do some other things. So we took 95 South to 495, 495 to the Hopkinton-Upton exit.
Yeah.
And I don't recall seeing a single billboard in, in that stretch. So there is, you know, again, as you said, coming south from like 128, you'll hit, you'll hit, you'll see a bunch. But I think, I, south of us, there's really nothing to the Rhode Island border.
We can involve the committee, we can really kind of kick this around, separation, where... I don't know how many you could fit in what I just said, that stretch, because really, to me, it's how many, and then where they are, you know, you don't want to set any of this stuff up, so some residential persons looking out their window, and there's this thing looming right over them.
Yeah. I, I think that, once, once you're involved in this business, you see a lot more of them than you ever thought.
Yeah, well, it's your business now, not your interest.
But I will say that the, through the state regulations alone, there's enough of a filtering, that there are far fewer opportunities than you may imagine, because of the distance from residents, distance from different signs, distance from on-ramps and off-ramps, the setbacks that were mentioned with regard to the federal highway system. I did want to make one comment, one that we're working on right now, on Route 24, has a road between where the sign would be and the interstate. And because of the height of the signs, they don't have a sightline problem with that side road that you may imagine, because of how high that they actually are.
It's just the pole.
Yeah, that's why when you were coming down from Sharon, you may think that it's right on I-95 because of its height, and in fact, it could be all the way on Route One, just because it's so high up in the air that it is. But for those side roads that run immediately along it, they would literally have to look up to see it, which, and there's all, there's regulations associated with that as well, too, sightline, distances, et cetera.
And kind of a similar thing that we went, went through was the cell towers. When they first came into town, that was a big hoopla, every time there was another cell tower. And I think we intentionally, I guess by design or pressure, we've got several of them really over by where we're talking about for this.
Yeah.
But they were kind of pushed over there. And somewhere along the way, I think the highway, does the highway department have one sitting out there somewhere?
The what department?
Cell tower.
The what department?
The highway department.
In Foxborough?
In Foxborough.
They may, I know there's one on the Public Safety Building.
Yeah.
They have one. The Bethany Church has, and it's steeple, so it's very common.
You know, we're just talking to one, one sign on Spring, Springbrook, right?
Yes.
One is one thing, but, you know, it's like the old adage, we say, "Once you do one..." One is one thing, but you know, it's like the old adage, we say, once you do one, you kind of put it out there or open for business, for signs, or whatever the flavor of the month is.
I will say one other thing, in Canton, in the 16 or 17 years now since the first one went in, that it's been revenue positive, certainly for the town, it doesn't have the negative impact other revenue generators do, that come at a cost of services. And there's never been a complaint. We thought when we first put these up there that there would be, you know, untasteful advertising and stuff of that nature. And Foxborough now, because you have them on Route 1, you've experienced, I'm sure, probably a similar situation where the envision of a negative impact is not as bad as you had originally thought.
Well, you know, when I think of Route 1 and that development over there, it doesn't impact anybody in a residential area that I can think of.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of, it's, the adage is starting to get, well, it's up on Route 1, you know. Clearly a commercial area.
Well, then again, when we started working on the bylaw, the signed bylaw in 2013, the thought of anything on 95 or 495 just never came up.
Yeah.
It was, well, we have billboards on Route 1.
Yeah, we needed to something, yeah.
So, any other questions?
No.
So, we want to put this on like our committee kind of?
How do you want to handle it, Frank?
However you want, Attorney Burr and I, I think it would be good if we could work with a member of the committee and how to make the changes to it. Again, you know, the first big question is, how do we want to attack it? Whether amend existing district and move forward with that. And again, we may find that, we may have to back up a little bit and go another direction. But I think in working with this board, especially because you're so familiar with it, and over time, we've made changes to the signed bylaw that we realized as a town needed to be changed to improve and to fill in any holes, that, you know, we like to do that. Again, so that we're working together, putting it together and then presenting it to the town as if you're going to approve this type of change, this is what we'd like to see. And then again, we'd have to come in front of your whole board to see if you guys would be in favor of it, as well as the Selectmen, Advisory Committee, and eventually town meeting, if it goes that far.
So, let me ask you a question then, is anybody opposed to moving forward or?
No.
No.
So...
Without a guarantee to them, except whatever we come up with.
Right, right. But you're not going to be here in January and we're going to rush.
You're going to bang it out in a couple of weeks.
In a sense, we're going to have to. Well, no, I guess we're not going to have to.
We're going to create a window of opportunity and I'm not going to be around.
So, what I'd like to recommend is if we could work with the chairman in doing this and, you know, we can decide how we want to attack it.
I think, because Lorraine headed the billboard advisory committee.
Oh, that's right.
Were you involved as well?
Sure.
That'd be great.
With Barney, yeah.
Okay. Let's see if we can... When, obviously, we would need to first get a placeholder for town meeting if we'd go in that direction. But typically for spring town meeting, when do we close the warrant, in March or before?
Well, technically, the warrant is supposed to close again February 1st. And that's when citizens petitions have to be, you know, given to the town with the 10 signatures. The reality is, the warrant closes when it goes to print. Because they close it and then they open it up, they've done it different ways. In my opinion, you know, the day you print it is when it's really going to be closed. But you also don't want to be running around doing things at the end, at the last moment. I think at some point, probably in January, you know, I'd like to go in front of the Selectmen, coordinate with Mr. Keegan about it, so he can tell them about the possibility of, you know, the thought at least of a billboard on the highway department and what they're thinking there, so that we can get a placeholder, so that we don't have to file a citizen's petition. And, you know, working with this board, hopefully, we can get something we feel comfortable putting in there and let the town decide. If they're amenable to that, you know, then we won't do a citizen's petition. You know, we're taking a little risks there, but I think, working with the town, you know, we can come together and tie them to it. You know, if we can do it, I'd love to have it by February 1st so that we give the Advisory Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and others a chance to really vet it for all the benefits and all the detriments. And, you know, again, you never know what someone may pick up that we've missed to improve it for the warrant. So, my goal, our goal, is try to get it ready for February 1st.
But you can zoom in from 4:30.
Well, you know, but the thing about, I believe, I don't know, that citizens petitions are the easiest things to get approved at town meeting.
Citizen's petition?
Yeah, I mean, you probably more experienced with seeing what happens to them, but...
It really depends on...
A lot of people, and if it's some sort of a, something that maybe not sit well with a lot of people, they can get sunk pretty easy, hey, none of the town boards worked on this, and you know, here we go.
Yeah. It really depends on the citizen's petition. And, you know, if we bring something forward that this board looks at, for example, and says, you know what, Frank, we like the concept, but we don't like the overlay district the way you did it. You know what I mean? We may then go, you know, why take the chance to go in front of town meeting and lose? So, we may ask no action, withdraw it, or whatever. You know, whenever somebody comes to me talking about a citizen's petition, again, I always recommend, go talk with the town, you know, see if you can work with them to get it on and get the wording right. And that's why we're in front of you. We'd be, you know, if the board doesn't want to get involved in it, we'd be happy to write it up and get a citizen's petition. And I know between the two of us, we can get that done by February 1st. But I'd always much rather to have your input as to how to put it together. And then, you know, Dave, you may say, yeah, that's the best amendment to the signed bylaw I've ever seen, Frank, but I'm not in favor of it, and that's fine. You know, I just want to try to get the wording that you'd be comfortable with if it passed, even though you may be against it.
No, I understand. And I'm not adamantly against it, it's just something I'm not really thrilled about. Now, you know, we're talking about the one that's in mind. That seems okay. I mean, it's isolated and all that stuff, but it's all the stuff up and down the roadways that you stop to wonder, you know, about, is this a good?
Well, that's going into the writing of it. Again, you can require it to be so many feet away from the residential zone.
You can put it in a zone.
Things like that.
You're not tied, your hands aren't tied with the 1,200 feet thing from the state.
And also, ultimately, we have the authority to approve or deny it with us.
Yeah, but then you can get it to messy appeals and all that.
Well, true, but we do have that authority.
I mean, you could write it, could be shooting myself in the foot, that. You know, right now, in your bylaw, it allows the dimensional requirements to be, I call waived. You need a special permit to get them waived. You know, we possibly could write it so that that 1,000 foot is, cannot be waived. I'm not advocating for that and all that, but in going through the process of looking where these could go, you know, especially once you put all the other restrictions in, you know. Because you may, you know, along that area, you may not care if there's one every 500 feet because no one's ever going to see it, you know. But in other areas, you may. For example, one thing that was pointed out to me is the areas around the 495s and 95 intersection would be very hard to get because of the on and off ramps, which I was not aware of until today. So...
It's a bit of residential on that clover leaf. I know somebody that practically...
In certain areas, in other areas, it's...
Practically in their backyard, just the way it is, you know.
Some of it's residential, some of it's limited industrial.
Yeah, it's a mix back, but there is residential.
Yep.
95 north is pretty much all non-residential, I think, all that industrial zone.
Well, you do have limited industrial over there for a little bit, you know, along 106 Green Street.
Yeah. That's right. That's been just sitting there for, that's pre-adjacent stuff, really.
Yeah. And then you have elevation issues, so I don't know if that'd be the best place. Maybe it is, maybe it's not, for those types of considerations. But again, with the ramps, that, you know, brings up some requirements for the state, from the state.
So, consensus would be that we just move forward and see, we can come up with some wording and open it up?
The January Selectmen's meetings are the 4th and the 18th.
I'm sorry?
The January Selectmen's meetings are the 4th and the 18th.
The 18th, well, both of them would be before our January meeting.
Okay.
Got some work to do.
I'll talk with the town manager, you know, probably 18th, that would be better one, so we can tell him how far along we are and go over it. I'm with them and ask for the placeholder. And also, if there's any issues, Attorney Burr and I will just start working diligently to get a citizen's petition together, if necessary. But I don't think it's going to be, I think we can pull something together.
Okay.
All right. So, we'll reach out to you tomorrow, next week sometime, to get the ball rolling.
It's on the fast track, huh? Get it done before he comes back, right?
What are you ruling with?
Just want to make sure.
The 18th to the 25th.
18th to the 25th, okay.
I mean, I'll look at, you know, I'm not, I just feel like it's going to be carefully done.
Well, we can send it down to you, all right? Take a look at it.
I'll literally with the rest of my email on open right there.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we'll reach out to you.
Happy holidays.
Did you send us minutes?
Yeah, it's one whole page.
Why did I not even see that?
I somehow didn't see that.
I don't remember seeing them.
I don't remember seeing them either.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure you sent them.
We can pass it down.
I don't remember them.
So, what did they say?
We met.
Said we met for like 10 minutes. It might be one of those, sometimes when I send, hit send, it doesn't send and it goes to my draft things. I wonder if that's where it is.
Thanks a lot. Take care, Frank.
Hey, that's what I'll look tomorrow and it'll be in my draft folders. It like, it goes and lives over there and then you don't know it's there until somebody says, I never got your email.
Yes, I have done that before. It's very frustrating.
That's it. That's it.
I think I'll make a motion on this one, all right?
All in favor? Or where's the motion?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, I've got nothing to report on Oil Man as far as an update and nothing relative to the Moore Street 40B. Diana, you've heard something in the last day or two?
Nope.
Okay, so it's still before the State Committee?
Nope, there was a guy who called about on Halliwell Road, a carport. His house is on the diagonal on his lot, so he's going to run into a setback no matter what he does.
He wants to build a carport? Okay.
So, he has till the 29th, I believe, to apply to get on January, so...
Well, we have another thing with Frank as well, so... And I, the way things seem to be going, again, I don't think we're going to have the 40B until February. But, and it may even be March because the, you know, like Frank said, as far as the outside advertising board, I think the Housing Committee is...
Probably the same way.
Same way, yeah. So, I know that they did a sidewalk, but, you know, I haven't heard anything since then. And the public commentary period is over as far as the state, so... So, we could get, you know, Mike could get a project eligibility letter before the end of the month and then it's a question of whether it gets to Diana in time to...
Well, I imagine he still has stuff to do, not like...
No idea.
Does he have everything ready to go, just waiting for this one thing?
Yeah, the full package, yeah. The full package usually on these, we'll give it to you next time.
So, I wouldn't be surprised if he gets that letter sometime in January and then gets to us late January, early February. But then again, it wouldn't surprise me if it's later than that. So, Paige Duncan and I did talk with an individual that we'd like to hire as our 40B consultant because I had, I don't know if I misread the state regulations or if it just wasn't clear on the issue. But I had read the state regulations to say that, you know, because we're over 10% within 15 days of a public hearing, we would have to make a decision as to whether we wanted to deny that for being over 10%. And apparently, all you have to do is notify the application that you have the right to deny and you can reserve that right. So, I was educated. And then next week, I don't know, Diana, if you're going to be in the meeting, but I'm meeting with Paige and Gabby. Because Paige is going to be on medical leave for...
Starting in January.
Yeah, from like mid-January to early March. So, I wanted to make sure that if we get an application in, what do we need to do as far as RFPs and things of that nature? So, I'm scheduled to meet with Paige and Gabby next week to talk about that. So, if the application comes in when Paige is away, Gabby and Diana can take care of it, so...
So, can I just, I'm not sure I totally understand you. So, we are, the statute says that we can notify the applicant immediately of our right
So, what...
to deny because we're over the 10%.
Yeah, so what the regulations require is that within 30 days of receiving the application, we have to open a public hearing. And because we're in what they call the safe harbor situation, because we're over 10%, if we were to, want to deny an application on that basis, we have to notify the applicant within 15 days, in writing, within 15 days of opening the public hearing. So, I read the regulation to me, we not only have to notify them, but we have to make that decision. And when Paige and I spoke with Judy Barrett about it, she said, no, that what is typically done is you send the applicant, if this is what you want to do, you send the applicant written notification saying that we have the right to deny and we're reserving that right, which means we don't have to do anything until, whenever we want to do anything, but that's our, you know, that's our position. So, what I was initially thinking was, geez, if we have to make a decision within 15 days, the first night, that's what we got to do.
Well, we don't, we can defer, essentially defer.
Yeah.
Which is probably the preferred thing to do.
Yeah.
Just because of the amount of information you got to go through.
Yeah.
And you certainly would want to have a sidewalk, don't you, I think?
Oh, yeah, definitely, so...
Can't do all that in 15 days and then the snowstorm comes.
Right. So, she said, what Judy Barrett said to us is what other towns in this situation have done is to issue a letter saying we're reserving our right to deny on the basis.
Yep.
And then the applicant has the right to appeal that. But essentially, we can wait until the end of the hearing to say, okay, you know, we have the right, you know, we have the right to deny and we're going to deny for the following reasons.
Well, we've heard everything you got to say. I mean, that's fair to everybody, right?
Other than just denying it because we're under this time constraint, we're not excited about it. It could be, you know, denied. Not really fair.
But again, I think that my best guess right now is February, is when we'll open the hearing.
Well, window of opportunity for me then, so...
And you're?
I'm going in April.
In April, okay.
And I checked my calendar, I'm good for the rest of the year because I had my planner for next year. I still have a planner like I was working. After the hall, and I said, oh, look at that.
I mean, not this, not...
Even missed a camping trip in June, the way it works, so...
I mean, notwithstanding the fact that, you know, everything's being videoed and we can watch it. I want to see what we can do to work around vacations. That's all I got.
Take the motions now?
Yep.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Yes.
Yeah, happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays.